To this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at 6:03 PM, do notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I'll do a roll call of members present, Mr. Fenstemaker.
Here.
Ms. Ferrera.
Here.
Mr. Machado.
Here.
Ms. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Viera.
Here.
And the chair is here. And absent this evening are Ms. Ramos Gagliardi and Ms. Solomon. Also with us this evening, our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Ronald Tarrell, our Director of Curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskell, our Director of Special Education, Ms. Meg Ashton, our Principal, Dr. Susan Browsberg. Who did I miss?
Allison Peddall, the Student Advisory Chair.
Thank you very much. And our Recording Secretary, Robin Vacara. We all stand for the Pledge of Independence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just.
Thank you, everyone. The next regularly scheduled meeting of this committee is on Tuesday, November 14th, here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. With the committee's blessing, I'd like to move public input to the first item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Public input. If you could just state your name and your affiliation.
Pass the floor, Dr. Lee, some great, proud students. Good evening, distinguished school committee members. I've previously addressed the topic of therapy dogs in the high school, and I wanted to reiterate some of the most important points since the launch of the agenda tonight. It's time for us to prioritize the mental health and wellbeing of our students, and a therapy dog in the high school is a step in the right direction. Studies indicate that therapy dogs reduce stress and anxiety levels and foster supportive environment more conducive to learning. The dogs will offer social, emotional, cognitive, and health benefits as soon as they spend time. The evidence-based benefits include improved attendance, problem-solving ability, improved positive relaxation, boost of attentiveness and concentration in class, increased motivation, and feelings of safety and security. Having therapy dogs in high school will help instill a sense of responsibility in students, and they have also been shown to cultivate empathy and nurture compassion. It's clear that therapy dogs can have significant impact on students' lives, both on their mental and emotional habits, and also on their academic success. It is ready for us to create a more supportive learning environment for all students. Since my last speech, I have done some research, and I found that over 50% of students sampled throughout the country feel that they don't have a sense of belonging in their school, and only 32% feel comfortable talking to a teacher about personal issues. This data was taken from the [inaudible]. I also found research that reported improvements in sense of belonging, students lose emotional suffering, regulation skills following the implementation of therapy dogs in K-12 school centers, based off of qualitative study entitled "Therapy Dogs and School Wellbeing." When we turn to increase a sense of belonging, attendance rates will increase, standardized test scores will increase, graduation rates will increase, but most importantly, students' mental health will be prioritized and valued in the mixed strides in overall content at SBE or RHS. I ask that the members of this school committee and the public and attendants participate in a very short activity. It will require every other person to stand for a reading moment. If one person would take the lead and stand up, and then the next person remains you, and the next person stands, and so on.
Thank you. I don't know if I can follow directions.
We alternate.
Upset? Okay, thanks, sorry. Just then.
The people standing represent 50% of our students that feel they do not belong. Please take a look around the room and let this harsh reality say good. One student who feels like they do not belong is one too many, but 50% is something we are obligated to fix. At least take a seat and think for a little bit. If the dog engaged, one student sit down, then this program is perfect. But according to the research, students will begin to sit, one after another. How wonderful will it be to say you are a driving force behind this movement? So go for mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. I remember how eloquent you were the first time you addressed us, and you followed it up with an equally eloquent and well-researched presentation, so thank you for that. Does anyone here? Thank you very much. And I'll just note that the question of the therapy dog appears a little bit further down on the agenda. Is there anyone else for public input at this time? Okay. We'll move ahead then into student teaching and learning. So the first item on the agenda is the report from our student representative, Ryan Viera.
So hello, everyone. So I'll just talk a little bit about stuff going on around the school to start. So as we are getting close to the end of Term One already, I'm not sure how, but it's happening, school sports, clubs, music are all underway. Football has a winning, all sports have a winning streak. Football, five to two. Volleyball, twelve to seven. Boys soccer have won 13 games, lost three. Girls varsity, eight and two, and field hockey in fourteen and one. There's been all different, I could go on forever, about all different activities that have been going on with sports, with music, sorry, and drama, so that's going on. Last week, there was the Halloween 5K, which some people were there, that I see. It was a great time. Somerset sports such as cross-country football and field hockey participated, and Thanksgiving rally preparation is underway already, with grades having already chosen their skits and had begun preparation. So one thing that, I'm glad Ally's here tonight, because we are both part of a student representative organization that really emphasizes bringing forth to the school committee other topics besides just sports activities, but some things that may be improvements to the school. So some things that we discussed at our last Student Advisory Committee meeting with Mr. Schoonover is the internships for next year. So right now, we have internships with Somerset Fire Department, and this is something that a lot of the students have gained interest in and would like to participate next year. One topic that we discussed was possibly connecting this internship, which I'm not sure if this is already happening, but connecting this internship to a class where you can gain further knowledge into this specific topic and career. Another subject that we explored was expanding foreign language opportunity. So this is, so as of now, we only have Spanish and Portuguese as a foreign language, so is it a possibility, A, to add other languages, or B, to even, I know this might be difficult, but to add an advanced placement version of this course? Another topic that we discussed was access to the library after school, so especially as winter sports are coming closely, many students have practices later in the evening. The library does close now, right after school, unless you have an appointment with a teacher for academic support. Unless you're there for academic support, you will not be able to use the library without a teacher. So whether it's a possibility to have some new staff be in the library until maybe 3:30, 3:45 would be beneficial for students to get work done before practice or after school. And then the last thing that we discussed at our Student Advisory Committee meeting was the accessibility of electives. So is it possible to gain half your electives so you can have a wider range of learning through different topics or just new electives in general? That's all I have. For Ally, have anything?
I think you said just about everything. Just adding on to the foreign language requirement, we also talked about how it's only offered at the high school level, so introducing foreign languages to younger children, I think would also be beneficial.
Thank you both. Does anyone have questions or comments?
Couple of questions. Where are the students currently doing their after-school, you know, since this room is closed, right after school, where are they currently doing it? Hallways and things like that?
For academic support?
No, for library access, just to come here, you know, do your homework while you're waiting for your practice.
Yeah, so a lot of, so if you have, I think a lot of students will take advantage of academic support, like if they're waiting for practice, they'll come here and they'll sit with a teacher, which I think is good, but a lot of kids, even if they're waiting for practicing, are trying to get work done, will sit out in the corridor right at the front of the main entrance, and they'll sit on the floor and they'll get work done or outside, but as it's getting colder out, it's hard to sit outside, so.
And something that I'm hearing more and more, and I'm glad that you're here, because I'm hearing it obviously from my child and her friends.
Yeah.
Accessing restrooms are becoming a major issue again. It seems like we have, I don't know how many restrooms are currently open, but I'm hearing now students are going from one side of the building to the other, so I don't know if that's something that we can address later on again, and I don't know if you have any input on that, but.
Yeah, it's definitely, so I was, it's definitely a tough situation. A lot of the bathrooms are closed, so it is, you might be in one class on the far end of the building, have to walk to the other side, it takes time, but I definitely see the reason why they're closed, as there are bathroom usage issues throughout the school. I'm not sure I have, or anyone has a solution to that issue, but that's all I have to say about that. Yeah.
Patrick Razer, do you want to address that at all?
I'm in the same place Ryan is. I mean, we're in a catch-22. We open all the bathrooms that we have, we don't have enough supervision to monitor them all, and there's people in the bathrooms, so we've decided to close some of the bathrooms. There are still, all the private stalls still open on all the floors. There's one open, you know, on every floor for each gender, plus the gender-neutral ones, two on the top, and we're doing the best we can to monitor them, but I only have currently one restroom monitor. I should have two. There's no applicants for a second one, much like the paraprofessional that's supposed to be here in the library after school until 3:30 to keep the library open, but I'm still down five paraprofessionals. So unfortunately, you know, I agree with Ryan wholeheartedly, you know, we would love to have the library open, this is obviously a beautiful, huge space that students could get work done, but we need to adequately supervise, so that's where we are. It's a catch-22.
Someone gets unfilled positions.
On both ends, yeah.
Do you have any questions? Yes, we're having a [inaudible].
No, no.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda are September Visionaries. We want to recognize Nathan Valanti, academic; Grady Boudreau, empathetic; Jules Donahue, academic; Cole Lima, independent; Sarah Melvin, resilient; Eric Olet, respectful; Jonah Pereira, digital citizen; and Jayden Veenstra, resilient. Congratulations to those students. The next item on the agenda is the School Improvement Plan presentation.
It's actually the next two. I think you have the assessment one also. Going to do a little tag team, a little combo, that's okay?
Perfect, that's awesome. More than okay.
And before they get started, it's interesting that a lot of the topics that Mr. Viera just mentioned, that the kids brought up at our last meeting, are going to be things that are addressed in this plan, too. It's just coincidence, but it's nice when kids are asking for the same things that the adults are trying to implement for the students.
So.
Well, no, but.
What are we on?
But they didn't know.
They didn't know.
That this was what was in the plan, and the things that they were asking for were very much aligned, as you'll see.
So our goals for tonight, we're going to share the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School data, we've got MCAS, Dual Enrollment, Project Lead the Way, Post-Samsett Berkeley Regional High School Education, SATs, and then what is not included here is the AP data, because if you'll recall, Mr. Schoonover presented that at the last meeting, so we're going to talk a little, actually, I did shuffle it a little, literally just before we went on, I'm going to talk to you about the vision of graduate again, and then we are going to go ahead and shift to our School Improvement Plan and how they all tie together. So last week, we were at MasQ, which is the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Conference, and it's a huge conference, it's Health Gillette, it's an annual conference, it's really amazing, and there are really great opportunities in terms of, you know, things that educators are doing with technology, and they have really great keynotes, and Ken Sheldon was the keynote on the first day. And one of the quotes, Dr. Browsberg and I, she actually had sent it to me, and it was one of her favorite quotes, and as we were also prepping for this, it seemed like a really appropriate quote to share, behind every data point is a human, and behind every human is a story. And so that is a lot of the conversation that we were talking about in terms of the data, because they are data points, and we are bringing them and sharing them, but there is a lot more to every one of our people, and we are certainly paying attention to those, too, which is why I changed the slides a little bit. Our priorities continue to be, and you've seen these since we returned from COVID, our the social-emotional wellbeing of our students, families, and educators is our top priority. We continue to provide a structured yet flexible learning framework, it provides access to essential learning standards, and the opportunity for a deeper understanding. We ensure strong, great, appropriate instruction with just-in-time scaffolds when they're needed, and always a commitment to learning. Again, a lot of the theme that you are hearing with Ryan just presented and the things that we're going to continue to talk about today. So you are, another spoiler, you're going to see this slide again, but we always like to go back to our vision of the graduate, because it really is a driving force behind the work that we do and where we want to be, and where we want to have our students when they get to graduation. And this is something we're committed to from pre-K through grade 12. So what I'm sharing, or what we're going to share tonight, these are scores from MCAS for 2023. We did include the 2022 slides, so you could do a little bit of a comparative. Again, just a reminder, I know many of you have heard this before, but this is for our lovely audience at home, we have four different categories, exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations. It also includes the scaled score, both for Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, that's in blue, and in gray is all the way down, or the comparatives for the state. So you can see kind of where we measure in relation to the rest of the state. So this is ELA. And again, this is for our 10th graders, our sophomores. And our math scores, again, it is the same setup in terms of the expectations. Somerset Berkeley Regional High School is in blue, and the state is in gray. So science is a little different. So it does say 2022 and 2023, but at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, we do physics first, and our freshmen are the ones who take the physics MCAS. And so the data that the state is sharing and presenting is 10th grade data, so I think we determined it's about a year and a half behind. So this is technically, these are not our current sophomores, these are our current seniors.
Seniors.
Right? So, but again, it is, it's the same setup in terms of our, you can see our scaled score is similar to the state, and then.
No, these are, these are the current juniors, but this is the test from a year and a half ago when they were freshmen.
Okay, they're, okay.
Right.
So it's freshman year, so it's juniors.
The state, the state always reports grade 10 assessment, or the assessment results for grade 10. So this is for the class, thank you, 2025, and ELA and math were taken in the spring of '23, science was taken in the spring of '22.
And this is the next-generation test for 2023 that you're seeing. You may or may not recall, last year, we did share the data for both the next generation and the legacy science test. So I just, on the left-hand side of 2022, we just kept the next-gen data, I did not reshare the legacy data.
So just going back to those, the data points of the not-meeting expectations, if you add up all three tests, there's 18, there's 18 students that didn't meet expectations at Somerset Berkeley, and, you know, I'm not making excuses for that, you know, ideal world, we have zero, but I do get the data by student as well. So Dr. Dusette, you know, goes over the data, and we look at the students that didn't meet the expectation in ELA, in Lawrence, in math, and now Danielle Tink, if it was Matt Teller at this point, with the not-meeting expectation in the science. And as at the admin team, we sit down and we look at it by student, and just going back to that quote that we used about, you know, for every data point, there's a person, behind every person, there's a story, when we sit down as an admin team and we look at those 18 students, again, I don't want to sit here and say, make excuses, so I don't want to say, oh, that stu-, yeah, but, but I want to say, that student, yeah, and, look at what they did, though. So yes, we didn't meet the expectation yet on the MCAS, but historically, you all know this as well as I do, we get to it by the end, they do end up graduating, and a lot of these students, when they come in, freshman year, sophomore year, there's other struggles going on that we all know about, social, emotional, transition to high school issues, and there are a lot of times that when you look at every single one of those students that doesn't meet expectations, they may not be meeting expectations on MCAS, but they weren't coming to school in September, and by January, by February, we got them coming to school regularly, or they were struggling here. There wasn't one student on that list that, as an admin team, we didn't know that person, we didn't know the story, and we didn't know that there was a lot going on beyond the test. So, you know, obviously, I can't sit here because this is confidential information and talk to you in terms of student by student, but, you know, I don't want anybody, you know, any of you, or anybody listening, or any of the students, to think that, you know, this is, this is just failure. There's a lot of good things that happened, there's a lot of positives that happened, even for these students that didn't meet expectations the first time out of the gate with the test, we'll get them there, and we always do get them there. So, you know, I just want to put that out there, and again, I'm not making excuses, we can do better, absolutely, we all, as an admin team, as our pack, as the contact coordinators, we all get together and we are focused on looking at this data and what can we do to improve, but I just want to just bring back that data point, because when Ken Sheldon said it last year, it really, last week, it really resonated with me in terms of, you know, data is data, but we're not talking in terms of just numbers when we're talking about kids, we're talking about students with lives and stories, and there's a lot going on, as you all know.
So the data that we have also included, we did not include the dual enrollment for this year, we are looking, I think it's by semester because of the dual enrollment, so that's a TBA, we'll make sure that we share that next round, we did fill in some of those data points from last year, including the two-year college, four-year college, trade school, we did not have that data for 2223 when we were here last fall, we did go ahead and include that this year, and then, as you'll see, we're on TBA, because we're not there yet for 2324. Our Project Lead the Way for biomedical science and computer science, as you can see, the biomedical continues to grow, we continue to work on building our numbers in the computer science, and it continues to be a struggle. It's a bit of a specialized area, and, and again, it is something that we'll, we're paying attention to and we'll continue to do.
We did start our cyber security class this year, this is the first year that we've had the cyber security class. Dr. Burke has made an amazing partnership with Bridgewater State, they have a cyber security program up there, so we'll be doing some work with some of our alum that go to Bridgewater, the program there wants to send people down here and really kind of make a partnership, so we're hoping that that kind of builds some excitement with that program, and we see more of an increase of numbers in, in that field. It's a niche, right? I mean, computer science, you know, getting a whole bunch of people jazzed about that, but I think where we need to do a better job with that is where we started with this whole thing, if you remember when we presented the Project Lead the Way program, we said, this is where the jobs are, this is where the job market is. I think right now, students are seeing value and see the job market in the biomedical studies, not so much in the computer science and cybersecurity, but again, now that we've made this partnership, we've started this cyber security, we have to do a better job with that, and that's, that's our focus now, is on that.
Quick question, am I looking at 109 students coming by our place next year? Meaning?
Possible.
I got a plan, I.
Yeah, there's 109 students enrolled in the biomedical population. And we added an addition, well, we added an additional fourth class, we didn't get enough students to run that fourth class as a singleton class, so it's paired with the third-year class, so it's, there's one section, and both classes are kind of being taught at the same time, which is not ideal, we don't want to do that moving forward, but we wanted to kind of get it off the ground, so we did it this year, and there's, as you can see, there's been a steady increase.
Can I just ask a quick question on the dual enrollment? Are those, those are students who've taken at least one dual enrollment course? It's not full-time?
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, I don't believe currently we have any students that are full of dual enrollment not at Somerset Berkeley.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the School Improvement Plan, you've had a lot of spides out of this. So I know you all got advanced copies of this, and if, I'm sure you all remembered my beautiful presentation from last year, word for word.
But if you didn't.
You, what you'll notice is that the goals of this year's School Improvement Plan are really exactly the same as they have been in the two prior years, because when I presented this two years ago, I said, this is not a one-year plan, this is a multi-year plan. And again, we always go back to the vision of the graduate, because, you know, my mantra, and I say this over and over again, is, you know, if we're not connecting it back to this, then we don't do it, and if, my number one question is always, is it good for kids? If it's good for kids, let's figure out a way to do it, and if it's not, then we don't care. So number one, we connect it to the vision of the graduate. Number two, we connect it to our district goals, so the District Strategic Plan, this is work that we did a little bit last summer, but more the summer before, is really focused on creating a strong strategic plan, and the goal of your school improvement plan is obviously, you should always connect back to the district plan, so this is just reminding everybody of our Somerset, Somerset Berkeley Strategic Plan goals for the district. And so my goals, prior to this year, there were four, and the first one was to create, implement, and assess our vision of the graduate. I believe we've done a pretty solid job of creating and implementing our vision of the graduate, that can be seen just about everywhere. We bring it up in school committee meetings, we bring it up in classrooms, we bring it up at Thanksgiving rallies, you've seen the rally skits, it's always embedded in that. So I think we've done a really positive job with that. I do think we still need to work on assessment practices across the board, but I don't think that's something that we're going to achieve this year, so my personal goal this year is to do my own professional development and the school administrative team's own professional development on assessment practices, how are we going to assess the vision of the graduate? And I've spoken before about how perfect world, I'd love to see some type of portfolio system as we go along to make sure that we're hitting all of our characteristics of the vision of the graduate, because it's tough, right? How do you assess that a student has achieved resiliency, or independence, or empathy? And those are things that, there's a NIAS conference that's coming up in December, there, there's schools that are assessing that, and we need more information on that, and I also think we need to collect more data before we can say we're going to go after this and hit it hard and achieve the goal of assessing our vision of the graduate. Assessment practices in general in school, I think we have to, to look at overall and kind of morph our philosophy and more of a, you know, 2023, 24 philosophy, because education is changing very, very rapidly, and I think we have to get with the times, but that's a big conversation, and again, something I don't think we're going to knock out of the park and achieve this year, but we're starting this year, without a doubt. The other three goals, developing and implementing engaging curriculum, high-quality instruction, authentic assessments that emphasize career college and post-secondary life readiness is something that we're very focused on, I'm going to get into these in a second. Last year, you remember me being here. Last year, you remember me being here, changing our graduation requirements. I kept this one as a goal, because I think that now that we have implemented that, we have to look at it in terms of the graduates this year and the students moving out, and say, is it working? And some of the data I really want to look at is what are students going to be signing up for next year in terms of electives? Are we going to follow the pathways of what students really want? And can we get them there, which is another struggle that we've, we've had this year. And I'm hoping the fact that we can manipulate this a little more and students can take electives younger, we will eventually get to where we need to be. But there's a struggle right now, we have kids, we have students that come in freshman year and they want electives, they can't get into it because we don't have enough sections of whatever it is that they want. And then, and rightfully so, they're coming to us and saying, well, this is, you told me about this pathway, I, I, this is what I want to take, but I can't get into it. So those are some things that we have to look at. And then we're always looking for ways to, to increase opportunities for teachers, students, family, and community partnerships. I think these two young people right here are a perfect example of that. I'm so impressed with the Student Advisory Council, it's the first time ever that they come with like, when I say a healthy agenda, like tonight, they come with a healthy agenda every month in terms of what they want to talk about, they know what they want. And I think that's awesome, so they're doing a really great job. So to dive into this a little deeper, goal number one. I'm not going to go through all of this, but goal number one is connected, if we go back to our NEAS tenure plan, it's connected to multiple priority areas that NEAS asked us to address over the course of the next decade, and also connects directly to our district goal number one. So what do we anticipate doing this year in terms of our action steps? The first thing is, we have, for the first time since I've been here, in the thirteen years that I've been here in this district, we have created a year-long professional development plan in terms of our school. We have created it in pathways, and this is also a three-year plan that we started this year. I hate to disrupt this, but if you click on that, you'll see. So this was our plan that we created right at the beginning of the year. So Monday and Tuesday in August, we had professional development that was structured through the district, but it directly connects, you're going to see in one second, to the rest of our pathways. So these are our pathways. So every single teacher in our school is linked to one of these pathways. Using technology to enhance learning, reaching and teaching freshman learners. Recall, we got rid of our CP level this year, so all of our freshman teachers are in that pathway. Social, emotional, learning pathway, building, thinking classrooms, and then we have a pathway for paraprofessionals. And we planned the entire year for our teachers. So our using technology to enhance learning, every one of us as administrators has been assigned a different pathway, so we're kind of the liaison. Matt Proff is really in charge of facilitating, he's our instructional technology specialist. He's in charge of our using technology to enhance learning pathway. Almost half of our school, maybe not quite, has been outfitted with these clear touch panels, with the plan to re-outfit the school with these clear touch panels, which are not just projection screens. There's a lot of curriculum instruction assessment that can happen with these. So part of what he is going through with this group is introduction to Snowflake, Snowflake Live. These are tools that you can use with these clear touch boards. So those teachers are going through technology to enhance instructional learning in the classroom. Reaching and teaching freshman learners, I've kind of taken the role as liaison in that class, in that group, working with the Highlander Institute, which is now called, I can't remember, through, through?
Through a, through, yeah, something.
They changed their name, they're not Highlander anymore.
They've rebranded.
But they have, we've partnered with them, they're coming in and running professional development with our freshman teachers. And what I think is really, really awesome about this is this is the first time, as a freshman cohort of teachers, we can sit down in a room almost every single month and talk about the freshmen and the transition, and talk to teachers in interdisciplinary groups to say, you know, what's going on with your freshman class and my freshman class, and what are strategies we can use with our, with our learners? And it's working really, really well, we did a book study, we all talked about creating communities in those classes using workshop models, so those are things that we're working on. Our SEL pathway is working with Wayfinder, Project Wayfinder, to learn different techniques of embedding Wayfinder curriculum, which is social, emotional, learning curriculum, into instruction practices in regular classrooms. This isn't just a guidance initiative, this is a classroom initiative. They will also be talking about responsive classroom later on in the year. Building, thinking classrooms, Matt is the admin liaison for that, but Andy Lawrence is facilitating that. And that is really the science, particularly math and technology, teacher-driven pathway. Allison Mello is going to be coming in later on in the year to take them through, through some professional development on her book, which is called Building Thinking Classrooms. They're reading that book together, and they're also right now really looking at the MCAS data. As you can see, that was the first thing they did in September, and they'll be doing it again tomorrow, tomorrow's. And then our paraprofessionals, we wanted to have a pathway dedicated to them, where they're talking about, what does it mean to be a parent in the classroom? We're going to take them through some health and safety training with Officer Roberts with Stop the Bleed, Caitlin Champagne, our special ed content coordinator is running through that. So this is a year-long plan, you are in the pathway you're in, with the idea that next year, you can go to a different pathway. So next year, our sophomore level, we will be removing that CP level. So our sophomore teachers are going to become reaching and teaching sophomore learner pathway. Teachers that are in this pathway can choose one of the other ones. Over the course of the three years, you'll get to take three out of the four pathways away with you as a teacher for professional development. We're going to modify the building, thinking classrooms one, because our science and math teachers will be done with that. We're looking at more doing a writing across the curriculum pathway for humanities teachers. So we're going to kind of revamp that one a little bit, but that is, that's our professional development pathway. I, I'm really excited about it, I think it's going really well so far. So that is our first goal for this year. Our next one is that we're still stuck on the capstone distinction classes. We've added more capstone classes this year, which is fantastic, in science and technology, English. Civics is kind of a capstone experience, so students are creating a project at the end of that one. And we are anticipating next year adding a history capstone course, and potentially a fine and performing arts capstone experience in the music production program. So that's where we're going with that. Ryan, here we go, the implementation internship and work-study programs. Right now, I have three students that are, I keep calling them guinea pigs, and they keep laughing every time I talk to them about that. But they are going through our pilot internship program. So we have two students over at the fire department going through an internship program. We have one student who's out on work-study, so three days a week, he leaves to go to work in a field that he anticipates next year that he is going to go into. And he is working the other two periods that he's in school, because of the way that the schedule falls, with our Innovation Pathways Coordinator, who's also our library media specialist. We're working on, to use, I'm going to steal Liz's words, but we're building the plan as we're flying it. They are kind of creating what the presentation of his work-study is going to be at the end of the year during that time. And the idea is, next year, we are going to open this up to any senior that wants to do this. It will be a ten-credit class, so two periods will be dedicated to this, back-to-back periods, so that twice a week, they'll be leaving school for the last two periods of the day. Once a week, they can come in two hours late to school, so they can start at the beginning. And then, depending on where the internship, what it is, we're, we're going to modify the other two days. But one of those will be, the idea would be, she would be teaching a course on this program so that they can get their research and their capstone experience kind of done during that time on their internship program. So paid, unpaid internships are on the table, and that is something that we are really, really happy about. We're working the kinks out this year with the hope that next year, we're going to open that up. It will not count towards GPA, but it will count towards credits. The only other caveat is you have to be in good academic standing in terms of graduation requirements, because two of your seven periods is going to be dedicated to this, out of the building, you know, working on what I would hope to be, you know, significant course of studies for whatever you're going into the following year. And then we are looking at implementing additional Innovation Pathways programs, either in early childhood education or fashion, technology, and design, as those are two programs that we have had a lot of interest in in the school, and there are Innovation Pathway programs available, so we are looking into that. So that is goal one. Goal two, two, is all about our graduation credits schedule and our guidance and counseling services focusing on that. Those are the areas in NEAS and the strategic plan that they're connected to. We will have our guidance curriculum finalized by January of this year. We are in the development process of creating a new college, not college, no, career fair experience for students. Last year, we did a career fair down in the gym. It was, it was fine, it was tables, and students just went around to the tables, if they signed up to go to the career fair number one. And if they were the type of student that was the go-getter, that was willing to walk up and say, hey, talk to me about such and such. What we're going to be doing this year is creating a career fair much more like a Blue Raider Block. So my goal is to fill the school, fill every single classroom with somebody in a career that is there with a presentation, with a discussion about that career. And we're going to have students sign up for where they want to go. April 10th, anybody that's interested, knows anybody that would be interested in coming in? Everybody I see are pretty much like, what are you doing April? But we're going to model it like Blue Raider Block. So what we've already done is we've sent a survey out to students, what careers are you interested in? We've got that list, I'm going to be advertising next month in my newsletter for anybody that's interested in coming in, and we're going to try to tailor it to what students are interested in. Because in a smaller group, students are much more apt to have those conversations, ask those questions, and become more engaged. And we're going to give them two, possibly three, it's going to depend on how many people I get, experiences. So it'll be two or three hours of, you get to choose two different places to go, or three different places to go, to hear about different careers. For our seniors, since we're talking about April, it's the Wednesday before our April vacation, they might be a little more finalized in where they're going. So what we're going to do for them is, not that they could go if they wanted to, but we also, we're going to kind of do a post-secondary school boot camp for them. I'm hoping to bring alumni back to talk about things such as, what do I pack for college? If they're going into the military, what is boot camp really like when you get there? What should I pack? What do I need to pack? How to change attire, what does it mean to, you know, apply for housing or get rent, or, you know, whatever the case may be? Because I was talking to a group of students, and I'm like, well, you know, if you go to rent an apartment, you need first and last month's rent. And they were like, what? And I was like, yeah, it's, it's expensive to do that. So just like real life skills that they can sign up and do that in lieu of the career fair if they so chose to do that. Credit for Life has rebranded themselves as well, so that is something we're bringing back the Wednesday after April vacation for our junior class. And they will go through the Credit for Life program that we used to have here, but they have really, really updated it with apps and technology and all kinds of things, so we're going to bring that back. Like I said, we're going to review our graduation requirements and see, based on our scheduling data this year, what's really going on. And then, terms three and four this year, we will go back to what we did last year, which is having our guidance staff push into Blue Raider Block for freshmen and sophomores this year, with the goal of next year, we're going to have that happen all four terms. So two terms for freshmen, two terms for sophomores, to really focus on embedding SEL, college, and career enrichment into our Blue Raider Blocks for our freshmen. I should, I should have brought the law. And then, our third one is increasing opportunities and awareness for student, teachers, and family partnerships. This connects to NEAS recommendation number one, and goal four. You'll notice there aren't as many recommendations based on this, it's just something that I think, you know, Mr. Spoonover and myself have had a lot of conversations about this. It's just something I think we feel really passionately about, is getting, especially students, to have a real voice in the school, because it's their high school experience, it's not mine. And we want to hear from them, and as, as Mr. Spoonover said before, it's really cool that what they want is, is what we're trying to, to work on and tailor, because they want, they know what they want. You know, students are amazing, when you listen to them, it's, it's never fluff, they, they know what they want and what they need. So that's really what we're, we're looking to do here. I really want to focus on dual enrollment, I think we can do a better job getting students in dual enrollment opportunities. I know we've heard from people in the past about that, that is a huge focus in the upcoming years. Not only with BCC, but like I said, we've made a partnership with Bridgewater now. I really want to talk about that and really get our guidance promoting that when we get to scheduling in February. Once again, I just talked about the Blue Raider Block, having students participate in our committee work, finding ways to hear from students and parents and community involvement, and again, our career fair. So this just really ties into what we've already talked about. So those are the three goals of the School Improvement Plan. And then the final goal that I wanted to bring up, although it's not part of the School Improvement Plan, because it's not a school-wide goal, but it is the administrative team, so the four of us, it is our professional learning goal for this year, which is to create an atmosphere of professional learning between and amongst professional staff at Somerset Berkeley. To be perfectly honest with you, since I have been, become the principal of Somerset Berkeley, which was a month before COVID hit, we have been, the three of us, because Matt just, just came on board, the three of us have really been managing the school. We haven't been in a position where we've been able to lead, because it's kind of felt like an emergency room. We've just been triaging, 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 the problem, the problem, the problem. So when we received our, our third assistant principal, it feels like it's like five extra people. Like, it really does feel like there is a lot more calmness to what we're doing. And our goal is to become professional leaders for our teachers, and then ultimately, the school. So we're really looking for that professional learning community with our teaching staff. I don't need to go back to the Professional Development Plan, but that was step one. We are encouraging our staff to create their own professional learning goals, to get in each other's classrooms, and many of them have chosen this as their professional learning goal. Go see what each other's doing. Because, you know, and I always use the example, for years, prior to Erica Prer becoming one of the assistant principals, I was the evaluator of the World Language Department. I can speak this much with any language but English, I hola, it's about as good as I can get, it's not my thing. However, there is, good teaching is good teaching. I could not understand a word anybody was saying in that class, but I could tell if the kids understood what that teacher was doing, if that student and teacher were engaging with each other. And then I left it to the content coordinator to deal with the, the content-specific parts of the evaluation process. But good teaching is good teaching, and you can observe different teaching techniques if you're a science teacher from an English teacher and vice versa. So again, going back to the freshman seminar that we have with those teachers, there's a lot of good things that can happen when you go see each other in action, so we're encouraging that. And then we are trying, not trying, we are getting into classrooms this year more than we ever have in the past. It's, it's part of like a daily routine for each of us to get out there and get in classrooms just to see what's going on. And we're documenting it, and we're tracking the data. So in September, between the four of us, we did 168 walkthroughs of classrooms throughout the building, and that does not count evaluations, that was simply just going in classes for five minutes, 10 minutes, just to see what was going on in the classrooms. And then, when applicable, we, you know, I'd shoot an email to somebody saying, that was, that was a really cool activity you were doing, or we'll tweet, tweet it out, X it out, whatever you call it now. This is what's going on in the classroom. We are dedicating faculty meeting time to talk about educational topics rather than things that I can tell you in an email. So we're kind of taking that away, I created a faculty newsletter that I give all that information in, so that I don't have to address that. It's a work in progress, because those of us in education, you know, you know that like, you have to train for MCAS. you have to train for NCAS and you have to do all these trainings. And there's only so much time that you have. So I've already had to give up the first two faculty meetings to trainings for other things. But next week in our faculty meeting, we're going to begin discussion of a year-long topic on AI because it's here, whether or not, you know, whether or not we choose to believe in it. It is here and the students know more than most of us. Although we had, I had a really great, a lot of great sessions last week at MasQ on this topic. So we're going to start the conversation, you know, the good, bad and the ugly of it and kind of wrap our heads around the topic because hiding from it is pointless to me at this point. So that's what we're doing there. And then we always want to focus on collaborating with our pre-K to eight staff in both Somerset and Berkeley because when they get to us, we want to make sure we understand where they're coming from and, you know, where we need to get them. So I didn't put that in the School Improvement Plan, again, because that's our own administrative goal. It's not really a school-wide goal that everybody's working on. It's something that we're working on. But I wanted to bring that up because I think it's really important and it's a huge shift, I think, in what's happening versus what's been done in the past. Now I'm done. I said I was going to be quipper on, I'm sorry.
Breathe. Thank you very much. Does anyone have questions?
Kind of curious about how you identified the organizations or the companies that are going to take the interns in?
So I haven't really identified anything yet. I'm hoping it's more of a student-led in a way. Like, I'm interested in this. I have this opportunity or I'm interested in this. Can you help me with this? So it really needs to be personalized. It can't really be like, we have these five things and you pick from these five exactly.
Yeah, but I was just thinking about who's going to make that connection. Is the student going to be promptable?
And that's something that we need to work on with our guidance department, with our Innovation Pathways Coordinator to really help that. That's, that's kind of the next step. The fire department came to me, to be perfectly honest. They came to me and said, we have this idea. And I said, I have this idea too, just to know how to get started. But we've done this anecdotally with the other schools of the area. Like we have, we've had students in other schools during internships down there. But that's something that we do need to work on as well is how to get those.
And the only other thing I had was on the, the college connections. Do you have a liaison at each location? Bridgewater State, I'm thinking.
Bridgewater, we do. And BCC, we've had a few of them. They keep working. But we have connections at both of those schools right now.
I'll say Mr. Fenstermaker, this morning, Dr. Brelsford and I were here with members from the state and the town. There were, Secretary of State's Department came to do an evaluation, safety assessment of the polling location. So we were walking around with them and there was a gentleman from the Secretary of State's office who specializes in cybersecurity. The second Dr. Brelsford knew what he was doing. She went right over to him asking, can you come in and visit our students? So she's also, I saw that happening very quickly. It was like a magnet trying to get this guy in.
My new thing is, what are you doing April 10th?
Very good. Thank you. It's great.
They do internships in Dartmouth. And the reason I know this, my daughter is currently participating as a senior. I was actually very impressed because I thought for sure there was an adult who was like coordinating it. There is not. There is a teacher who is, you know, in charge of the class. The students were required to get themselves an internship and there was a deadline. And if you didn't have it by the deadline, you had to go to guidance and teacher class. And I was like, wow, that's kind of, and she's like, I got mine, don't worry. But it was, I thought that that was a really interesting approach. But again, they're seniors in high school and we're working so hard to kind of get them to that point of independence.
Have to do that after high school, right? So they should learn.
And even when we talked about.
And I think it's a delicate balance too, right? Because we even found with our, with our capstone program, we've, I mean, for lack of a better term, we've had students ghosted with their mentors. We've had it all set up and we thought it was, and then all of a sudden people stopped responding for whatever reason. I'm not, you know, blaming anybody. But that's something that we've struggled with, you know, Mr. Chase and Ms. Gosson, who were the two teachers, they've struggled with that. Because then that becomes like, oh, like what am I going to do in January when this student just lost their mentor? So we've got to come up with a way to help students. But it's, it's a concern and something we do need to kind of wrap our heads around.
Skills that we focus on that NCAS does not measure.
Well, and you're building some foundation when we mentioned the work that the guidance and SEL team will be doing with our freshmen and sophomores, right? That was, with Innovation Pathways, that was always the intention. We're going to build some foundational skills in terms of their understanding and some skill set, you know, that I could call soft skills or, you know, those kind of career and life-ready skills. So that when they get to junior and senior year and we're starting to kind of launch them into some more independent work, they have some background and they've had some opportunity to kind of reflect on that and consider, you know, the behavior that is aligned with the workplace and when you're out in public and some of those other things that maybe you don't necessarily have those conversations otherwise. So we're, we're really trying to open that up to the preparation is throughout the course of, of their four years here. And, you know, we've even talked about, as we were talking about the alignment with the middle schools and the high school, how do we expand that and some of that, that consideration? Because middle school students have amazing potential and we can create some, you know, these age-appropriate opportunities for them as they move up. That, that makes the foundation even stronger.
And then going back into the freshman and sophomore curriculums in, in the content areas and looking at that and how are we going to prepare students for capstone experiences junior and senior year by what's in our freshman and sophomore curriculum? Because we shouldn't be going in one pathway until we get to a capstone experience and then flip it on its head. It should all be naturally progressing towards that final culminating project. But that's something we, we have to revamp that as well.
Do you have a question? I'm curious, do our student reps have any feedback or comments to make on that?
I do have one question. So on the last slide, you mentioned integration collaborative, collaborate with pre-K through staff, SPS, BPS, vertical alignment of curriculum. So when I came from, so I came from Berkeley, we don't use Aspen to select our classes in Berkeley.
I know.
When I got to, in my freshman year, I didn't have the option to select a Project Lead the Way course when some of my friends from Somerset have been taking the Project Lead the Way biomedical pathway since their freshman year. I didn't have that opportunity because I wasn't exposed to that, to that option. Is that something where, that was also during COVID, so that might be something. Is that something that has changed since I've been here?
Yes. So not only has it changed since you've been there, but Thursday, I'll be talking to my contact coordinators. I am having every contact coordinator sit down with our guidance staff, starting in November, to go over the, we've just, we've just finished the program of studies for next year. So it's on paper, it's done. They're going to sit down and go through with the guidance counselors their entire program of studies in every department so that the guidance counselors really understand what each class is, who should be taking each class. If a student is interested in this, should they be here? And so they really understand, because I want to say when you were coming in, that was our first year, maybe our second year, Project Lead the Way. I don't think everybody had a really clear understanding of what that was. Whereas that needs to happen when we go down to middle school so that we're explaining to students, these are all the awesome things that we have here with a really deep, number one, deep understanding of it. But also, this is where you want to go. This is what you're interested in. Not everybody's going to know what they're interested in. But if this is something that you're interested in, this is like the sequence of classes that you want to take. And if you get halfway through and you decide this isn't for me, that's okay, leave your off. But we do have students here that show up and they say, this is what I'm doing. And if it's what they're doing, we want them in the right path, which goes back to everything we talked about last year with the graduation requirements.
That answers my question.
I would just sort of to echo what Ryan said, what as a Berkeley mom. The vertical alignment to me is, I think, really a crucial area. I can't tell you how many times my sons have said to me, we already read this in middle school. We already read this in middle school. We already read this in middle school. You know, which is frustrating, right? So, because there's only so much time to, and there's a lot of, a lot of books we could read. So repeating them is, so I'm really happy to see that focus. And I know that that takes coordination on both ends. So I appreciate that, especially from an ELA perspective, I think. I hear that a lot just in my own house. The other thing I just wanted to commend was the PD pathways. Brilliant, I think. As, I think that those of us who've gone through PD that often feels, I don't want to say haphazard, that's too strong a word. But like sometimes it's like a day and then you leave it in the room and then you know, it's sometimes difficult to see the carry-through and the carryover. So I think that that plan of having dedicated folks focusing throughout the whole year on those strategic areas is going to result in better teaching and better learning. And I just think it's a really smart way to approach it. So kudos for that. I'm stealing that.
That was it. We spent a lot of time this summer.
So I think it's a very smart approach and I'm thinking, I'm guessing one that staff is somewhat, to get investment, right, is not just two hours here and two hours there and how do these things connect? So I think making that really explicit and planning it out for the whole year is, I can't say, wait to see the, the results that that's going to bring.
We're, we're asking teachers to be responsive to the needs of kids all day, every day. And we're working really hard to be responsive to the needs of the adults when they're learning. What would we have that opportunity? And so that's, that's what we're going to continue to do. And then at the end, you know, everything we kind of talked about between the kids and you being listening, we're trying to do that so that it's, so you don't feel like a victim of your professional development. I mean, people often do feel like that. I used to call it basic time Wednesday and obviously a different story. I know, it's not nice. But it was like, oh my gosh. And we'd like, this is wonderful Wednesday. We've got PD tomorrow. I'm certain that's what all the teachers are saying to you. Thank you.
We don't need to vote to accept the plan, do we?
Oh, I should mention the School Advisory Council has already endorsed this one, which is mandatory.
Right, that's on the presentation.
It's in the actual school plan, but.
Thank you very much. So the NCAS results were embedded into that presentation?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right? We don't need to, enough on NCAS. Okay, just making sure. So the next item on the agenda is going to be the overview of the Tiered Focus Monitoring Final Report. Here's Ashton.
Okay, so we just received our final report October 12th. And I, I think it's a very positive overall TFM, Tiered Focus Monitoring. We now have a continuous improvement monitoring plan. They like all their, their letters. And their TFM, I will mention, is actually changing. So we're going to work through this corrective action plan, well, that's what it used to be called, is the corrective, continuous improvement monitoring plan this year. And while, I think my last progress report is due in end of February and then we should be complete with this. DESI is now unveiling a new TFM kind of. So it's going to be a little bit different when we, when we engage in our next round. However, I have to say, and I keep telling Henry, I'm not even going to attempt his last name, but my DESI, the person, my DESI chair for this, that I have found the process to be very supportive. I don't feel it to be a gotcha in any way, shape or form on their onsite visits as well as I have numerous calls with Henry. And it's all to help us improve. It's all to help us, you know, do checks. So I think a lot of times we get so used to our practices that we don't have those like reflective checks. So sometimes the questions he'll ask me, it just gives you that, that period of pause and then give your answer. And there's times like, wow, that's great. We're doing it really well. And then there's times that he helps us say, hey, well, I went to this district and they were doing this. And it really is all about continuous improvement. So I, Henry laughs at me when I tell him I actually like doing TFMs. I've done the CPR, it was the full process that it used to be in my last two districts. But I've always found it to be a supportive process. So I enjoy it. I feel like I learn a lot as we're going through it. Our, our tiered focus monitoring came out very positive this past, they were onsite last year. We only have two findings, which really are partially implemented. And then it's really just one find, but kind of affects two areas. So if you, basically, I know I sent, we sent these forms in the packet so you could see the improvement plan, I'm sorry, I keep calling it improvement plan, but that I had to write with Henry for the two indicators that we need to work on. But basically, Dr. Brelsford's well aware of it and Caitlin, our news content coordinator, we've already been speaking about it. So the, what we got our finding on is that our inclusion rates aren't as high as they would like them to be, as some of, as the state, you know, percentages. They want our inclusion rates to be higher. We have higher partial inclusion or we have students in our specialized programs. I was explaining to, to Henry that I feel, so I'm not sure everyone's understanding of the IEP service grid. So A is a consultation model, the A grid. And that's when our service providers will, you know, work with one another and kind of consult on a student. The B grid is what is the services that are provided within the general education setting. So those are inclusive services. They are not pulling a student from the, their access to the general education setting. But the C grid services are those services that are provided outside the general education setting. So students have to be removed from the general education setting to receive these services. That is why the Department of Ed wants us to improve upon. They want us to improve and embed our services more in the C, the B grid. So our students are getting, we're maximizing their access to the general education setting. I was explaining to them that our instructional strategies class is a C grid service. That's, that is a service that is only provided to students if they're receiving, you know, special education services. So it's a C grid service. It's removing them from, you know, the general education during that time. The other thing that we were noticing is that we schedule our students for four times in a six-day cycle. Their, the, or four times in a cycle, the instructional strategies. There, in their C grid, it may say instructional strategies four times. And then it also says maybe two times 30 of speech in the C grid. Quite often, that's our speech provider. And this is all, you know, discussed in meetings, but that speech service is taken from that instructional strategies. But yet we have our, our grid reflecting that the student is pulled out six times when it really is four. It's two instructional strategies and two speech. So I think our numbers or our rates of, you know, the amount of pullout are higher than there truly are. So Caitlin has been working on correcting those IEP service grids so that the data we report to the state is more accurate. So our corrective action plan is really going to be to develop a team that will, you know, their actual Department of Ed is coming to our leadership meeting on November 1st and they're going to talk to us about creating a team to do a data review. And then we will be, you know, getting a team together. I'll be a part of that with our IEP coordinator, Dr. Brelsford. And we're going to be looking at our service grids. We're going to be looking at how we recommend students for services in the B grid or the C grid. We're going to be looking at how we continue to focus on the least restrictive environment for all students. I think you all know that over the past five years, I'm a huge proponent of the least restrictive environment. But it's in making sure that we're having those conversations in all IEP meetings and that when students are accessing our specialized programs, that there's a fluid movement between inclusive opportunities and our programs. So our main focus of this and during this continuous improvement monitoring plan is just to continue to focus on that, ensuring that we're giving all of our students maximized access to inclusive education, to the general education setting. So I don't find this to be anything that is like really negative on our district. I think it's a very positive TFM. I think it's a very meaningful conversations that we can have to continue to have those conversations about least restrictive environment. And I think it's only, working through this process, it's only going to improve the services that we're providing to the students and the access they have. So really, I find this to be a very meaningful and not an extensive improvement plan, which is very positive. We are, we remained on a self-monitoring plan. So I basically will work with our staff and will create our progress reports. We submit our progress reports to the Department of Ed. I'll keep my conversation. We submit our progress reports to the Department of Ed. I'll keep my conversations with Henry. But it's not, it wasn't some major corrective action that they need to come onsite and work with us. So I think it's a very positive that through the entire process, these are the only um two findings that uh we have to report on. So. Uh we did have one, and um if you read this on the initial stage, uh so you had to report on your indicators as well. One of our indicators um was some timelines and with some of the struggles that we had. We, a couple of the timelines, this was more on the Somerset side, we're off on evaluations. We didn't have a school uh school psychologist for, you know, two years. Most parents, parents were very understanding and would extend the um the deadlines for timelines. But we still were um asked to make sure that we focus on our timelines and they had us, uh over last year, I had to report every timeline that we had and they were all um compliant. So they did not issue us a citation. So that was great. So all in all, I think it's a very positive thing. Um we're already working on our corrective actions. So I think it's a positive. Any, are there any questions or?
Yeah, well, I I have, I guess my only question is, I I know with the paraprofessionals and the staffing challenges, is that inhibiting your ability to get some of these things together or? That wasn't noted as it in the evaluation, right?
I think we're, that wasn't noticed in our evaluation. I think that we're having that to a greater extent this year than we were last year. I think if we don't correct our staffing shortages, it will affect how we're able to reflect service grids, how we're able to support students. Again, I I think students should be supported within the classroom, a gen ed classroom to the greatest extent possible. But many students are gonna require support within those classrooms, whether that be through a specialized teacher or a paraprofessional. And we need to be compliant with those service grids. So um if we, you know, if we're writing something in a service grid, we need to know that we're able to provide that service. So I think um I am very hopeful as we're working through um the next contract with the paraprofessionals and as we're working through things that I think some of our hiring challenges will um improve. So that we can continue to focus on providing students the education in the least restrictive environment and provide them the support that they need to succeed.
Great, thank you.
I just have one question. I'm remembering, I'm thinking back to the new solutions, the report that we forget when we went back in February. And I'm just wondering, sort of, in your mind, that report, um to what extent do you feel like that sort of aligns with those findings? And I know, I think one of the, I think one of the selections, suggestions in new solutions was maybe some more instructional coaching for content area teachers so that they feel maybe better equipped to do some more inclusive practices. So I was just wondering, sort of, now we have that report and this report, sort of how you can help us make sense of them.
I think they did, they did align, and we did bring this up with um the new solutions, when we, our instructional strategies classes. And the idea of specializing them. So and and same thing with our, you know, our co-taught classes. Really looking at if, you know, a student is, what is their area of need? If their area of need is math, instead of having them in an instructional strategies class, which could be a catchall class, just that we, you know, any, if you have the secret service of, and it's hard because it comes up from a middle school. And as a mom, I know, you know, it's a, you see it as a supportive, oh, well, you know, it's kind of like a, we used to, it used to be like an academic support class when we were growing up. Like, it's probably good to give it to them. They might benefit from it. However, we have to sort of look at what their skill area need is. And instead of it being a catchall, specialize that. If they have a need in math, maybe we give them some in instructional strategies focused on math with the hope that we're teaching that skill, we're closing that gap by junior, senior year. They don't need an instructional strategies. Instead, we're maximizing their access to all these great, you know, innovative pathways and things we're talking about. We're also talking about, like, like you said, supporting those, the the te, the content teachers, building their coaching capacity. So we don't need those instructional strategies. They get, they're embedding those great instructional practices and the remediation of skill within the classroom that we don't need to then take them away from something else that, I mean, there's a rich education you can get in high school. There's so many electives and experiences here. But if we're, if their IEP has us, has all these secret services, we are taking them from them. So it's really looking, um having those really deep conversations about, do we need this? You know, secret service. And if we do, how are we gonna ensure that it's meaningful so that our hope is, there's an end to it? IEPs are written for one year. Let's hope that we don't just continue to have the same service grid year after year. But instead, we're building the skill uh so that we can close those gaps, move the students forward. So I think it it all is um engaged in that conversation that we have with new solutions. And this year, they did um specialize already the instructional strategies to an extent. So we do have reading-focused instructional strategies. Any student that has a reading goal there and has that need there in a a reading group with Dr. Doucette is reading, is doing some of the reading groups within that instructional strategies. And they also doing the same with math. Students who do need some executive functioning, they may have their instructional strategies, still accessing some of those skill areas. But our hope is that we maximize students in freshman and sophomore year in instructional strategies, that by junior, senior year, they're really not engaged, having to participate in those.
That's great. Thank you. That sounds like movement in the right direction.
We're all trying.
It's hard work. So we all appreciate everyone's efforts and that. And it's a really great report. So thank you for all your, all your efforts. Okay, um moving on. So the next item on the agenda under new business is therapy dog presentation.
Okay.
I didn't know what was going on up there.
We have a, we have guests.
Hello.
Wherever you're from.
That would be great.
Hello, everyone. All right. So I have um just like a little flyer for everyone. And then I have Griffey's like resume. It's not really like a joke. It's like legit. It's like all the things that he's done to be certified. And I also have for you information about the Alliance of Therapy Dogs, which is what they're affiliated with. First of all, thank you so much for having us tonight. We're excited to be here. Obviously, Marge Cardozo, she ever represented K to eight, and she also has the STA background and um she represents the high school. So Griffey started uh this training as a puppy uh when he was about ten weeks old. He went to Eric Latender's dog training, which um he is like the guy in the area. That's where Raider also went for training. Uh and so on the back of the first page, it just gives a little bit of the overview of like what the puppy program entails. And that's just like the basic skills that any puppy would want for your dog, um to like be trained, like, you know, sit, come on call, some of the basic skills. Griffey was in that class like from ten weeks and then he was with older dogs. And once he turned five months old, he was eligible to go to the K nine Good Citizen Therapy Dog Program. So that program, anyone can go to, but like they'll be very honest with you if they don't think that your dog will meet the criteria to continue. So at the beginning, of course, like it was a lot of learning, it was a lot of practice. We were told it's anywhere between like five hundred to a thousand times per command. So even things like, I was just out in the hallway with him, like I can be like forty, fifty feet away, he'll stay there until I call him. Marge had Onyx in the hallway. He didn't go to Onyx. He just came to me. Um and those are things that we learned over time um in order to pro obedience and to comply with our owner. So those skills were um taught to us. And then on the next page, it has the ten skills that a canine good citizen has to pass. Oh, I know, I know. So you have to be able to greet a friendly stranger. So if you have someone that says, hey, can I pet your dog, can I pet your dog? And then he has to be able to be pet, he has to have his paws squeezed, his tail grabbed, um he has to be brushed, ears pulled, like the whole nine. Uh they have to check his teeth, like, like have a random person come up and like check his teeth to make sure he won't bite. And then obviously, he has to be able to walk on a loose leash, move politely through a crowd, which means like obviously he didn't jump on anybody as he walked through. But that's kind of the thing, like when um like walking through a hallway at like Walmart, if I have my cart, he has to stay on the side of my cart with me. He can't just like wander off, which, I mean, he's done that all the time. Sure, some of you have seen me at Target, Walmart, Marshalls, everywhere. And then they have to behave politely around other dogs, react with confidence to distractions, and be left with a trusted person. That's more for like safety reasons. So for example, like if um if I had to go to a meeting and he was in the building and I didn't want to bring him to the meeting, like stay in my math office and just maybe stay with a colleague because I'm prepped. Besides, like I want to have the dog with me in Andy's office. Like, he can obviously just sleep in my office. I have a shut door. He'd have privacy. He wouldn't bother anybody. But if someone was like, hey, I'm office grade. I want your dog, like, he would stay with that trusted person. But he obviously would not be around students um without me being present. So those are the skills that he had to pass. So I kind of just went through like on the back of that page, just all the places that he's been. I'm not gonna go through all those, but like he has been inside during athletic games over at Keith's Middle School when my daughter had games. I have videos of him sitting like next to me on the floor while basketballs are going by. I, he's been to uh travel soccer, club soccer games, where it says like no dogs allowed, but obviously he was a therapy dog in training. So kind of superseded that. Um and he would be kind of like at my side and not be bothered by the ball or kids running around. Um and then it has all the other places that he's been. And then I kind of just put through like the goals on my last page, like my objectives of what I'd like to do while he's here. And that's kind of like a soft opening of just bringing him into our time just to see how it goes. I live one minute away, so I do have the luxury of, if I have a prep or a lunch period off or something like that, picking him up, dropping him off if that's needed. If I feel like he's tired or if I just feel like I have a busy schedule that would not be conducive to him visiting classrooms that day, he can, I can kind of come and go with him. I do have the benefit this year of also teaching a PE class as an extra class. So like when I'm out on the walking track, I have a few kids that do not want to walk even when I beg them to. I do think that he would help. I really think that walking, like when I'm doing the walking track or fulfilling my obligations to get those kids doing things, I do think he would motivate kids to keep walking, um if I walked with them with a dog. I have, you know, tested him out under a lot of circumstances um and in school settings, and it's been nothing but positive. And with the two years that we've had Raider, I asked Mr. Schoonover, there's been no complaints, there's been no incidents of biting. He's been through the same training and more than Raider. Raider's a great dog. No, I'm not. I just feel like my dog can hang. Like, he's, he's got the same set of skills that um that Raider had gone through and beyond to get aligned with like a therapy dog company. So those are kind of like the general objectives I have. Uh one thing I was, that I was asked at the K to eight meeting was just to talk about some other schools. So I did bring articles that I will let you all take. I just only had one of them. But like Attleboro High School has one with a school principal, and like I have some pictures of like students like from their Facebook page at Attleboro High School. It's the principal who has the dog there. Um and basically, it's a part of their project. They call it the twenty thirty project. And it says to help and support the needs of students' wellbeing. And that was the main objective of bringing Shay, which is the principal, Kate Campbell's dog. So these are off their page. And then they also have an article in the Sun Chronicle, uh which talks about how Foxborough and Attleboro have used therapy dogs. And in either one of these instances are they with the school resource officer. Uh Foxborough High School's with the music department head, um and uh Attleboro was with the principal. And the principal feels that's so successful, she's publicly said that she'd like to even look to having it in each of the house systems. Like, a lot of the bigger high schools have like grade nine or the white house, the red house, like the different colors, and she was looking at possibly extending that. Now, I looked, hi, uh Mr. Goh had asked me at the K to eight to look for their policies. I looked everywhere for Foxborough. I could not find it. Attleboro was just on their page, so I did have that for you, all to view. I have a copy for you guys, whoever would like to review that. Um and then obviously, there's a huge article on the Sun Chronicle about Foxborough High School. That's the dog Duke that is with their music content coordinator. And when Duke started, he is a box mix, he was kind of just in the puppy classes. When they let him in, he was still doing, kind of like Raider did here, like Raider was in the training while he was, he was like learning on the job. That's how Duke is learning. Um and Duke was born in January twenty twenty-two. Um he started doing the training at twelve weeks old. So um the handler had uh experience, obviously, doing that. He got his AKC puppy certificate. But what I thought was very interesting was it said to become certified, you must pass a series of observation tests with an observer from Alliance of Therapy Dogs. And that is the exact group that um Mrs. Cardozo and I are affiliated with. So there, I look at Foxborough and Attleboro, well, Foxborough especially is like our size school. When we can sports, we pretty much, that's like a the same size. And so if like they can do it, it's not with like a school resource officer. Um it's with a content coordinator level, I thought it would be appropriate. I thought that was a great example of another neighboring school that you could have. What do you want, what do you like? So I did bring all those copies. And then I just had like an extra copy of like the tentative policy, which has obviously had the first reading. But it's definitely one of those things that, um I did not do this because I had a good puppy that I'm attached to. I live one minute away. I can see him whenever I want. I'm I'm like invested in the school. Uh for those of you who know me, I'm here at football games, I'm at soccer games, I coach basketball, like I'm not going anywhere. I'm not gonna like get the dog trained and leave and go to another school. Like, if I want to go to a school, I can do it many times. Um I don't want to. I love it here. I teach math here. I coach here. This, my kids go, go to the elementary school here. I live in town, like I'm invested in the district. Um I'm not going anywhere. I hope my dog lives a long time, is happy, healthy. And I'd love to be able to share what he does for like, what I see in public and what he's done for other people with the students here. I do have letters from um our principal, Dr. Bresford, uh who has advocated for Griffey, and I do have a copy for everyone. Um I also have letters from our assistant principal, Mrs. DePudo, uh from Mrs. Rabello in the math department, from Ms. Traubman in the art department. Uh one of my students, Chris Alts, um and then obviously Ms. Ford has spoken on our behalf as well, which I really appreciate. So I do have a copy of those letters just to have, I mean, I'm not trying to overdo it, but I just want to make sure you have everything that I have there. So I do have the support of the staff. Um I often get asked, when am I gonna see the dog again? Because he was outside at football games last year. He was a puppy, so I figured, well, if I'm here, other people have their dog outside the stadium. It's no big deal. But obviously, like I brought him to Chase School trunk or treat last year as a puppy in his tiger costume. Like, he's, he doesn't mind. He's just very well-trained. He knows I'm the boss, so he knows that like not to be distracted. He's been around alarms. One of the things that the test they had to do was like have shopping carts like banging into him like nearby, and he had to not be distracted. He had to stay with the handler during the test, and I had to go to the other end of the store. So he's gone through the rigors of therapy dog training. And part of our responsibility, in addition to possibly bringing them to work, is like we have to go to visits at either nursing homes or facilities that are looking for volunteers uh once every three months. So I do feel like we have the support um from the students and the staff. Not everyone is gonna want the dog, um but he is trained not to bother somebody who doesn't want the dog. So if someone says, I'm afraid, I don't want to pet your dog, I'm not offended. He just stays with me. And if, you know, there's a situation, um that means diffusing, he is gonna be at the disposal to help. And I know one of the questions that you know, to K to eight, but what about being pulled from class? I was pulled from class the other day when two of the administrators were at a conference. We had some alarms go off in the bathroom and we had to do some searches. That's part of my role and responsibility as a middle management here. So I was pulled from class to do that. Someone watched my class for ten minutes. And as I said at that meeting, like, my class is like a well-oiled machine. I have videos from my students of my lessons. So if I'm out for ten minutes, I literally can be like, all right, guys, I can't present this for five minutes, but you can watch this video. Ryan's in my class. He can vouch for me. I sent them my backroom videos. But they're all me teaching the lesson. So even if I'm out of the room for five minutes, they don't miss a beat. My kids are trained to like in class, like work in groups, collaborate. So I have the utmost of faith that whether it's me in there for five minutes or, you know, if there's a sub in there for five minutes, they'll keep the ball rolling. And um it's not gonna be like a long-term thing. But they can bring someone up to me, or I can go help, or have scheduled times to support students indeed, especially if they go into like an emotional situation. like an emotional situation. So I know there's a lot of talking there, but I'm really, I promise you, I'm in it for the right reasons. I don't want a single penny for this. I've put in thousands of dollars and I don't want a dollar back. I just want to support students and my staff because they obviously want them to.
We said to the insurance, we would pay our own. It's two fifty for a year. It's a two million dollar policy, so it covers the dog, covers any liability, and actually covers if there's an injury to the dog or.
And I also have pet insurance on him, so if anything were to happen outside, he's covered. He's covered under my homeowner's policy when I'm outside of my house. He's covered at therapy visits for Alliance automatically by being a member, and then he'd be covered at work through a policy that has Somerset Berkeley and Somerset Public Schools named on the policy as like somebody who's also a joint owner of the policy. And again, I'm willing to pay the share of it for the school district. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I did the math, and we figured I was a dollar thirty-eight a day for a hundred and eighty days. I can figure out.
Yeah, I don't mind none at all.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think Raider, I mean, he does great things for the kids, you see that. I started the middle school, my kids were in middle school when Raider joined us. I thought it was great. I think that, you know, it's it's my daughter's first year at college, and they have a full-time therapy dog at her university. They had midterms last week and the week before, they actually brought in puppies. For hours, you could just go and sit with puppies to get ready for midterms. But they also made sure that they had their therapy dog on hand whenever, you know, it's accessible. I think I think it's it's a fantastic idea, will only help. You know, our our students are saying it's something that they want. I think the staff would appreciate it. So yeah, no questions, I just I would support it.
I took her in last year one day, and I worked with the special ed population. And I have one student who would never work, but he actually finished up eating on the computer, and I have a picture of him patting the dog while he was working. And it was really good.
Also, I was asked from a team of students for some pictures because they were doing something for the unfortunately, most of the pictures I have are fixed, like he like lays by my feet because like that's what he'll do when like he's not like quote unquote working. He'll stay on my side, stay at my feet. So like I don't have a lot of action shots. Like I have the video, I shared with them of him at North, like leaning while soccer was going on, like running fifty feet, like I'm fifty feet away from him, making him stay. He comes when called fifty feet away. I just did it in the hallway out there, so I'm sure it's on the cameras with Dr. Relsford. But like he's he's able to do that while there's distractions. So if there was, I did mention this at the K eight, but if there's an emergency, like I'm still able to fulfill my role, I have a walkie on me at all times. If I'm in my classroom on a lockdown, I'm sure my students, if he's in the room with me, would feel a lot more comforted during like, even if it's just a drill with him over in the corner with them, helping kind of just ease, he'll just lay there, he won't go anywhere. If there was a situation, if I need to evacuate with my students, he's just coming with me. So it doesn't change my role. I'm not, I am more of like a middle person there, like just kind of protecting my students and the people in my hallway. I'm not like a critical person in the process. I'm like the common person in that, like as a regular teacher, like leaving the building. I, you want to play? But if there's anything else you have, like, I mean, I'm sure, we don't have the answer, we can find it, but we have put in like many hours to get ready for something like this, and we'd love nothing more to provide the support to the district.
Mr. Machado.
Most of my concerns that I had had been addressed with the insurance and all of that. The only two things that you've mentioned today that I didn't think of until today is the dog knows or you know, and like, hey, I'm afraid of the dog.
Yep.
You know, please keep it away. How would that work in your classroom?
I would bring it to that class.
You wouldn't bring it to that class? And then the other question would be, how, what does that part-time mean? Obviously.
So like right now, it would start out with like, all right, like, hey, on Monday, I have I have like a last lunch and I have PE last period. I'm gonna grab the dog, I'm gonna bring him in for as long as the kids in my PE class are comfortable with, especially where it's outside, weather looks good, like there's a lot of, and the gym is huge, like there's a lot of space if you don't want the dog to be next to you, like those are two very big, it's a lot different than a classroom. So like that would be a day where I'd be like, all right, twelve-thirty, I'm gonna run out, I'm gonna go grab Griffey, I live one minute away, pick him up, he'll come with me, we'll go to PE class. And then after school, like at dismissal, maybe I'm outside the buses with the kids, like just with him. A lot of times, like last year, if I had him in like, like before basketball or something when no one's here on a Saturday, I'd be at the foyer and, oh, I know Griffey, he wants to play with Onyx. So, um, so that's kind of.
I'm eleven years old.
That kind of gives me like that flexibility. And then like on a day, say I have like the lunch period off where I have two hours, I might have some flexibility to, you know, make schedule some visits either in some separate rooms or the guidance department, because like I said, I'm more than willing to do my prep work before school, after school to make up for the time I may need to. So I I'm gonna give up my personal time here, not any educational time.
No, and that's that was one of the things that I was really concerned about the school is how does all thousand students benefit from this? One of the things that I was talking to Mr. Schoonover was the, obviously, the classrooms that Griffin has, you know, with the students, they're gonna benefit the most because obviously, but when Ms. Lawrence mentioned that, you know, on my prep time, on my, I plan on going from class to class to make sure that all the students are benefiting. So at the high school level, I'm not as concerned, I'm more a little concerned is in the elementary level, I mean, in the K eight, because we'll have it in the middle school, but I'm trying to figure out how we can either get a service or anything like that. So and then the other concern that I had, which obviously we heard, you know, is this gonna be something that is going to be a stipend position? And they quickly said, no, I'm doing this because I want to make sure, helping, because I didn't know how that would have come into effect. And then the last thing was regarding the, I'm more concerned about, or I was more concerned about the how we would be responsible, but we're not because of their insurance. Like when I was looking at a vendor, they would come in with their own insurance. So basically, they're becoming an independent provider of something that obviously is benefiting the students, and it's not costing us anything. But if we get to a situation where we need more, we may have to provide that service. Because obviously, so all my concerns got, I'm still a little concerned is about the K eight level, how we can manage all four schools. And obviously, I know, knowing you for so many years, I know our students are not, you're, if you get pulled out like you currently do, and you already have that system in place that you mentioned last week. So that was my, and then obviously, the last piece, which you addressed, it's basically on that policy, it says that the principal makes the call. And and I would only recommend that the superintendent also helps with that call, so it's consistent at every school. Because obviously, our principal's is just really one school only, so that was my only concern that I had more, again, at the K eight level.
Absolutely. No, and like even things like last year, like my daughter was here for like the strings event, like with music and stuff. And like if he was allowed to be here at the time, like I would have like, I was gonna chaperone. And I was like, well, I'm sure kids will be nervous, I'll just bring them with me, like, you know what I mean? And so like the kids were waiting for their turn, like they're here a long time, like some of the kids are here for like three hours. I was like, well, like if I'm chaperoning anyway, I'm sure my daughter and her friends and all the kids, like that's like another incentive, like to recruit kids. I'm just saying, like joking around, but like we have a lot of kids who are in elementary. Do they come here? Do they go in staying? Do they go like to dine in, whatever? But like, oh, there's a dog there, like that's pretty cool, like when, like, and those are things like I'm more than happy to do. I'm at football games, I'm at athletic events, I'm at like a lot of events at the school, so like all the kids know me anyway, so it's just another another layer is having him with me at these things that I come to, like open house, he can be here with me. When we have shadow days, he can be here with me, things like that.
Students want to say anything? I have to put you on the spot.
No, I think I think it's a great idea, like it's been a long day. Griffey and Onyx walked in, how can you not put a smile on your face? I definitely see the positive aspects to it. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a great idea.
I'm gonna just thank you for sort of the thoroughness with which you, we had some questions and concerns, obviously, but so I want to thank you for all the information that you compiled for us.
Yeah, of course.
It's really helpful. And they're adorable. My dog would not meet any of the ten criteria, maybe one.
Andy was saying one. This other dog would not. Like I have a nine-year-old, she's a great dog, like he would love her, but she would not make it here. She'd be like, she'd be barking, she'd like be looking for the door, like he just wants to, if Onyx wasn't here, he'd be sleeping. He wants to play with Onyx, like that's the only thing, and there's only gonna be one dog here, so he's like thinks it's playtime. But other than that, like he's just always, like he would be laying at my feet because like he doesn't have that play. He just wants to play because they know each other from training, like they've trained inside and outside of school. But I mean, I think it's, I think it will, I we were, I'm willing to tailor it to the needs of the school, like whatever I can do to help is I'm willing to do. So like I said, that's my role, I would be a couple, starting out a couple days a week, like during prep, during lunch. Like Wednesdays, I have a good day where I have like a long lock off, and like I think that's a great time to come in and make some visits. And then like if I have like a last period off, that's even better because I can do dismissal. If I have a first period off, I can be outside in front of the building with him.
And the CGC is the easy test. When you get to the temperament test, that was most stressful.
I put you on the spot, Dr. Relsford. How do you foresee this? How do you, like obviously, Mr. Lawrence is gonna come, hey, may I bring my Griffey in? How are you in your, obviously, once we approve it today, how do you foresee this going currently? Or what's your plan?
So my plan would be, I like to source to play at the stop doing, I kind of allow it for a little time. But I see it as actually you more control the law, Mr. Lawrence, as a student. We have students that begin receiving as an incentive, behavior incentive. I feel like this is a little structured in terms of, you know, we can mystery that your, what your sisters, Mr. Lawrence, have all. Okay, well, this is a period where we can get you some time with the dog and kind of schedule it a little bit like number of our Saps, you know, much like you need what about Saps, because the students come, you have to schedule time, you can't schedule Griffey the same kind of way. Will there be crises where it's like, hey, you know, sports, can you calm down? Yes. But I don't foresee that as much as the scheduling visits based on Mr. Lawrence's schedule. I also truly believe, and anytime I've seen Raider or Griffey's prior to now, it's just a schedule. Actually, I want to go to the schedule. You can just see the way their students behave always when the dogs are around. It's it's a way where, you know, if people are starting to act up or get loud or whatever, even in the lunchroom, it's like, hey, guys, the dogs are around, let's calm down. It automatically brings the the level of activity energy down because the dogs are around, it's a calming presence. Ryan just said, I know what the past has been saying before. The dog automatically, he's smiling, he brings calmness to maybe a Nazi home environment. And if you read my, you know, my letter at the top, I sort of, I am not a lot of person. I don't have a one, I don't have a one. But Griffey's Griffey's amazing. I mean, I seem to be seeing him at evacuations and things like that, there's a lot of people around, a lot of kids around, he sits, and this is the most active I've actually seen because.
Well, because Onyx is here, he wants to play, yeah.
He's a really good dog. I think we have structures that work also with mutualist. I would only expect one dog, you know, he's our dog. If if we, you know, years down the line, we get to to look for another dog, because whatever circumstance, I think if we put an application process together, you know, this is not a, all these dogs are in building up, this is very structured and organized, and I think I'm really excited if we can create opportunity for us.
Now, you just hit the last one that I'm, is this going to be campfire wild type of thing? You know, everybody's bringing in adults, but obviously, it's something that you you have a plan for. And then the other, the last thing is, you had mentioned when the class, when a dark, when a student is afraid of the dog and you would not bring it to that class, let's just between two classes, I like the idea that you do have an office where.
Yep, I do.
Griffey can, you know, take an ass for the day.
You also talked about sending a survey out to students, just saying like, you know, if you had a real major issue with the dog for whatever reason, less, kind of like we do with other things, with why you're sure, you know, online or whatever case maybe, this could be another kind of checklist. Then we would have those students, we have a list of those students, and we can send a list of ones, like, you know, avoid this class for this period because, you know, he has a really good, does not want the dog. We also have, we don't have little ones here. These students, I mean, if a student or an adult didn't want to go around the dog, you don't go around the dog, the dog is not, you know, that's just reality. So I I don't force, I really don't foresee issues. And if there are some significant ones, like I said, we can do some reforms, send out some of those most problems that we have, you know, have that list, we have those pictures and everything else.
And and that was one of the parent, one, she's not a parent anymore, she's actually a grandparent. When I had made the comments previous, she did reach out to me. And one of the things that she was concerned about the younger students is that when you see a dog in the school, like Raider or anything like that, and you go up to it, what she was concerned is like, how about if my grandchild is now walking in the street and sees a dog? Is that is that going to promote? And I'm like, well, that's a little bit more of a training thing, like I know I never put my finger between a fence where there's a chihuahua on the other side or something like that. So but all of my concerns, again, the only one I'm still working on is the K eight portion, and hopefully we can figure out a plan on that piece.
And we have information we can share with the kids too, with like Hattie approach. And I think luckily, I have not run into too many people that'll come up.
Right.
Even kids, they'll come up and say, can I pet your dog? You know, a lot of times I encourage them choosing training. I would, if someone had actually wanted to pet him and said they'd be allowed to choose in training, and I'd say, no, that's what we want you to do. But last year for Halloween, I let all the kids that came up, they all asked. So I think the message is out there now with kids, is you need to ask first.
Yeah.
Just wanna say thank you too for your, you're essentially volunteering and prep time and lunchtime are precious times.
Yeah.
So the fact that you're, you know, using some of that time for this to support our students, I think is wonderful and grateful for that.
I just had a question regarding the insurance.
Yeah.
On this sheet here, it says that a grant has been applied for through the Somerset Berkeley Education Foundation for the licensing.
So we had said, like, we were told, we were asked by Sharon to apply for the grant to like cover the insurance. I had told Mr. Machado, that's like a conflict of interest, I'll just pay it, it's fine either way. Like I'm gonna pay the bill. If they want to cover it because Somerset Berkeley is named on it, then that's fine. If they don't, I'm not upset, I'll pay it anyway. It doesn't, if it's like a conflict, it's not a big deal. Because like if I get the approval, I will literally go home, I will hit the button, and I will like pay the money on my credit card that's in. And as soon as I get the certificate, it'll be like with Mr. Schoonover and Dr. Relsford.
Yeah, yeah.
I will have that paper there.
Yeah, that was the second point, is that we want to have the insurance in place.
Yes, I would not bring him, I would not bring him without the insurance. So like, I would, just, it's on their website, and it basically says, for working dogs in schools. So you just go on, you, like, you fill it out, just kind of like you would sign up for car insurance, it's the same type of thing. Because you're doing it through Alliance, like, they come with a number from Alliance that are your dogs. And so that's his, like, affiliation number, and then you just sign him up that way.
Mr. Lawrence, just so, regarding the insurance and the grant, I just brought it up to you to make sure that it doesn't violate the ethics.
Yeah, no, absolutely, no.
You may want to check that, you may want to check that first, because if it is not, then apply for it.
Like I said, I'm going to pay for it either way. And then if, like, it's one of those things, we find out, it's fine, great. I mean, if not, it's fine anyway.
I just want, I don't want you to not pursue it, just make sure that it doesn't affect that ethics thing.
No, it's fair. It was a, I, I know.
We didn't know.
Yeah.
So we want, thank you for that.
And I guess my last thought is that maybe we set up, like, a 60-day, just an update from someone.
I would be happy to come, whatever.
You know, make sure I was growing, working for all parties, let's put it that way.
I just want to clarify, Policy Subcommittee.
We meet again next week, 30th.
Next week?
Yes.
So, just for, so this is on the agenda under Policy for Second Reading, right, for tonight? And then you're going to have a meeting next week, Policy Subcommittee? So then we could have Third Reading at our next, um, full meeting.
Yes, yeah, so then, because we'll have more.
Are there, is there a change to it?
I don't think so.
I was going to say, I was going to say, does the Policy Subcommittee plan is, I know we haven't met yet, but you, if, if, I'm wondering out loud if there's not going to be a recommendation for a substantive change, could we, we could even waive Third Reading?
Because, I only have one item on that whole policy that I'm concerned about. It's the word owner. I'm wondering if, you know, owner always concerns me. I would, I would rather have, like, handler, a handler or something like that. Not like, I'm the owner, or like a handler, or someone that's, you know.
Right, because we're considered, like, a, we don't have teams, so we're handlers.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the only word that bothers me on that.
And I think when I met Mr. Schoonover, I think the, the information, we talked about union-wise, it was handler teams.
Yeah.
We defined that. And then I think the policy that we had looked at was, was we changed it to handler.
Okay, because the last time I checked, it said owner, that's the only word, but I, I'm fine with, unless we need a third reading.
Well, I, I don't wish to preempt any work that the Policy Subcommittee might do, but I also feel like there's some, there's a sense to move along, right?
Yeah.
There is nothing significant for next week, if that was the case.
So.
There was nothing significant on the policy meeting that we thought we should change.
No.
Okay. So why don't we, I'm going to, when we move down to the, why don't we, I'm going to pull that policy out, all right? And we'll do the slate of the rest for a second.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right. Couple items down on the agenda, but we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Of course, yes.
Unless you want to, you want to move it up now? We'll move it up on the agenda. Why don't we do that? Yeah, you're here. You stayed all this time, right? All right. I would, um, entertain a motion to approve, uh, to waive the Second Reading, and approve the Third Reading of the Animals in Schools I M G policy, um, as revised. With the.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Do you want to?
We've never done a Third Reading. We've always just do first, yeah, we've always first and second.
Sorry, I remember Berkeley is a while away.
Oh, you do, great.
All right, so let's.
Got to wash you.
Go. Okay, sorry. All right.
Sorry, I'm not supposed to say that word.
No, thank you. Sorry, let me rephrase. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the Second Reading of the Animals in Schools I M G policy, um, as revised, with one change, the addition of the word, or the substitution of the word handler for owner.
I was just trying to go through here and see.
Owner slash handler?
Yeah, we'll, we'll jump it.
Okay. Owner slash handler? As presented. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Ferrer and seconded by Ms. O'Brien. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So voted. Approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if the two of them will give you approval, you can start tomorrow.
I am going to go home. I'm going to try to get the insurance right now. And as soon as I have the policy, I will send, I will forward it to both Mr. Schoonover and Dr. Belsford. Um, I can do it to Ron as well, obviously, and anyone else who needs it. Um, and then I will talk to Dr. Belsford about getting it.
Just to be on the safe side, when they do get that policy over to you, probably to share with Mr. Murphy, just so we can.
Absolutely. I won't, I won't, I won't have him in here until it's like, everyone's like, all right, we're all set.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Bonnie.
Patience pops.
He wants to play, like, it was, I had soccer. I was told by my son's soccer coach that, oh, by the way, your coach was maybe at practice. And I was like, oh, thank you so much, that was a big night, love. And so he didn't, usually we'll go play or go for a walk, and I had to leave my daughter in time. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Say hi.
I want to go say hi too.
Oh, yeah, he'll stay. He just, he was like, with him. Thank you, everyone.
Third reading. That's why I was.
That's only if you want to change it. You can change it and go for three.
Be the most hated school committee member of all time.
Height in a row.
I don't know, that's, that's a lot of people on that list. It's a lot of people on that list.
Oh, okay. Fabulous. Okay. Moving along. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, to approve the reinstatement of the World Languages Club.
Yeah, so.
I never knew, it disappeared.
Well, and I had, Mrs. Taro and I had, and Dr. Belsford had the same conversation earlier today. Uh, because I missed that when the agenda was posted. Uh, reinstatement, when I looked at the contract, like, no, it's still an appendix C, like, you know, what is this? But it really hasn't, it hasn't been active. So I guess that's really what the concern is. And then with the upcoming trip, uh, there is a question about funds and what account is going to have those funds. So I'll let Mr. Taro explain this item and.
You did a great job, Mrs. Tannenbaum. We just, the, the fund was dormant, it had been zero balance for a while. Because of the fundraisers, they need to have a fund to put it, it has to prove, the auditors has to go to a revolving fund. So this would be the most appropriate account to put it in. But it's been dormant, and I didn't want to open it up without school committee notification and at least acknowledgement that the fund is being opened, whether it's under a formal vote or just acknowledgement.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, I don't think, like, I don't, I don't think I've ever taken a vote to dissolve or anything. So I, to me, I think that the account is, it may be a zero balance, but I don't remember if I was voting to.
So you could just reactivate it.
We could reactivate it, but I didn't want to take the liberty of reactivating an account that's been dormant for so long. Not under my watch. So I, I just dotting my i's and crossing my t's, so.
Now I have nothing to complain about.
You, you're fine, so.
Well, we appreciate that. We consider ourselves duly informed, and thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed.
And Dr. Belsford will work. Do we have an advisor?
Kelly Barrett is the advisor, and I, so I was asking about getting, um, some student officers. We can, that's, we need to sign up on it, or you're positive, so that will take care of it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of the M A S S, M A S C, Resolutions for Support Amendment or Opposition. And this gets to be Mr. Fenstermaker's, um, job for us at the M A S C conference.
Yep.
I think there are eight, there are eight amendments?
You want to, you want to go through each one, word by word?
Yeah, please. It's only eight o'clock, so we definitely should.
Make more ways of reading?
Are there any, any questions or comments against, are there any objection, I guess, to the resolutions as presented?
I didn't have any objections.
No, no.
Does anyone else?
No.
The two that, that, just so we can talk about for a minute. There's one here on, uh, regional transportation, it's trying to put a little bit, getting more consistent money out on that. And then another one was on MCAS, uh, to develop a wider, more consensus-building strategy for evaluation system. But those are the only two that jumped out at me, but, but, uh. So, if there are no questions.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to support, uh, motions one through eight with the M A S S, M A S C.
Resolutions.
Resolution, uh, at the conference in November.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Ms. O'Brien. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Mr. Machado abstained.
Okay. Which one did you not like?
And, I think I know. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
You know, I really, um, didn't have anything to report tonight. I think Dr. Belsford, um, through her presentation, she addressed some of the things I was going to, uh, talk about. So I, we can move on.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask Mr.'s, you know, question? Uh, this was a question that came up in the K A level, where he gave us a report with, uh, staffing. Um, one of the things that I was, I wasn't aware of, and we heard it today, obviously, with the restroom monitors and also with the, a personnel to handle the after-school library, that we're actually thirty, thirty-three percent, understaffed when it comes to powers at the high school. So that was a number that I was not aware that it was that high, thirty-three percent. So, um, so I shared it with Mr. Schoonover, I mean, with Mr. Fenstermaker when I was in the parade the other day. So, just in case if anyone else didn't know.
What is that number? Can you tell me what that thirty-three percent is though?
Five.
It's five.
Right, five out of ten. Five out of fifteen.
Roughly fifteen.
Sadly, that's the case across the commonwealth. Everyone is in need of that staff. All right, moving along. Uh, the next item on the agenda under Policy Updates. So, um, is there anything in here anyone wants to pull out? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the Second Readings, the Second and Final Readings, of the policies as noted on this agenda, um, which will become part of the permanent minutes. And I'll just note that we, um, have already voted to approve Item D, so it would be A, B, C, and then it would be E through N as noted on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Mr. Machado. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So voting. Next item on the agenda under Other Matters and Informational are update on the status of search for treasurer position. Uh, Mr. Fenstermaker?
On this, um, this position was advertised on school spring, uh, and we, and, initially, and we had four applicants, one withdrew. Uh, we determined that we should go out again, and it was reposted last week. Was it last week? It was reposted last week, and we have four additional, um, applications from this one here. So I think we've got a, you know, a pool to, to, to offer. I mean, the Subcommittee is going to try to screen those out, uh, screen some out to make our permission.
And that's, Mr. Remus Gagliardi and yourself?
Yes.
And Mr. Taro?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. We look forward to a positive update next time. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is Somerset and Berkeley Public School Updates. Mr. Machado?
Ms. Ferrer?
I happen to have the agenda right here. Uh, that's why I try to keep them. So, we started off our last meeting with, uh, joint with the A and F, um, fin, uh, Advisory and Finance Committee. We talked about the Chase Window Project. Uh, we also talked about the railings at North. And we discussed the articles for the special meeting. They, um, approved the trip to eighth, uh, eighth grade to DC. We had the same presentation that we had here, um, March, kind of took, uh, the lead because it, uh, she will be with Kate who ate. Uh, what else am I doing? We changed a couple meetings, I think. Uh, we actually discussed, um, we're talking about doing a retreat for Somerset, Kate who ate, just like we do here at the region. So we talked about some dates for that. And, uh, we're supposed to get together with some, come up some ideas for topics. We had some first readings, which I think we did second readings here. We're, we're a little behind on that one, uh, because of the way the, uh, the dates fell. And we got some donations that we accepted, but I think that's it. Did I miss anything? Mr. Machado?
No, and we also approved the same way, uh, with the, with the resolutions.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so Ms. Solomon's absent, so I was looking to see if I could produce any updates for Berkeley. Um, I do know, uh, that, I know that Berkeley continues their work on the, uh, building project. Um, and the only other thing that I'm aware of, I'm sure there's much, I apologize to Berkeley that I want to say this, um, is that I know that the Berkeley Police Department and specifically, um, the S R O did some school safety training with, I think, the middle school students and staff. That was a great success. So, basically talking about how to handle emergencies. Um, so I know that we've got a great partnership with Berkeley P D, um, and the work that the S R Os are doing in the district. So, um, other than that, I'm sure Ms. Solomon can update us more fully at our next meeting. Topics not anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Um, action items for future meetings.
I have one. And I'm actually very sad to say this, but I think we need to start looking, um, for our new business and financing, um, person to replace Mr. Taro. I think, uh, it's an important role, and I think it's something that we really should start, uh, considering posting, uh, see what's out there. Obviously, um, it's going to be extremely difficult to replace, uh, Mr. Taro. But I'm also concerned with two budgets that I've always mentioned, and it seems like it's two jobs to make sure we got the right person for it. Because, uh, in my tenure here, we've been very fortunate to have some good, um, business and finance people, but we've also had some that wasn't up to as much, as a level, and those days were very difficult. So, um, I would recommend that we start putting a plan together for that.
All those not in favor?
There's still time to change your mind. That can't be the slam.
I spoke to his wife, she wouldn't let me.
I think that is a wise suggestion.
Do you see that starting as, I can have a copy of, uh, the job description that we used when Mr. Taro applied for the position? Would you like to review that as a committee?
I would, I would prefer having Mr. Taro looking at that job description to see if it actually reflects of what he actually does. Because, you know, job descriptions are only as good as when we post it out. But I think if you two could start looking at it, then share it with us, and then I'm sure the both chairs will probably set up something, um, to, but it's just something I would say start today, um, versus starting in March.
Unless the committee feels differently, but we'll talk about it more.
Yeah, March is the cruelest month, so we won't start then. Okay, anyone have anything else?
We're going to have a follow-up at some point, whether it be next meeting, I put, on the dog.
Yeah, just sixty days, so do we want to put that on the December agenda?
Yeah.
Right here. I won't remember, that's why I'm writing it down, and that's why we have Robin.
Robin will remember.
Robin will remember. Therapy dog. Oh, that's our cue. Okay.
Get out.
Next on the agenda, um, consent agenda, uh, I would entertain a motion to accept the following minutes as presented, unless anybody wants to pull anything out?
Nope.
Open session minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Joint open session minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Joint executive session minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Mr. Machado. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Last item is public input. You're going to have something.
Real quick.
I, I'm going first.
Okay, right.
I never do. I just, I failed to, earlier, I failed to, and I, I'm very, I wanted to recognize and thank the Performing Arts Department. Um, and the Somerset Friends of Music. I was very sad that I wasn't able to attend, um, the, um, ceremony honoring Dr. Perry. I had a class that night. But I heard, uh, nothing but great things about all of the events. And that in particular. And so I just really want to thank Ms. Ferrer in particular for all of your hard work. Um, I know you didn't do it alone, but I know you did a lot. So, um, I want to just say thank you for doing that. I know it meant a lot to the community on every level. It was a pretty, pretty fabulous celebration, so thank you.
And then the music time.
Music time, the whole, the whole, the whole week, the whole, the whole shebang, yes. But, um, that in particular. And to Mr. Machado for kind of spearheading that process and making sure that we vetted that and went about it the right way.
Yeah, and obviously, kudos to you for. Yeah, and obviously, kudos to you for bringing it up first. But the other thing is, basically, Dr. Perry, I had the opportunity to speak to Dr. Perry. He personally acknowledged the whole committee and how he vetted it through. But he wanted to, just in case of those that weren't there, he mentioned the school committee in this speech thanking us for the honor and how well we researched the whole thing, so.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input? Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Different second than nothing. Motion by Ms. Ferrera, seconded by Mr. Fencezmaker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.